Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's presentation of the 2022 warrant articles. I'd like to point out a couple important dates. First is the deliberative session, Tuesday, February 8th at 7:00 PM at the Kingswood Art Center. In Clement weather, date is Thursday, February 10th at 7:00 PM. And then the town elections will take place on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, right here at the Great Hall. And I'm going to start over here to my right. Brian is not here, but he will be here shortly. Then there's Luke Freidenberg. I'm Linda Murray. Dave Senical, my vice chair, Brad Harriman, and Town Manager Jim Pinio is up at the microphone because he's going to do the first slide, which will be the estimate tax rate impact for 2022. Jim?
Thank you, Linda. This slide depicts the warrant articles, which we will be discussing this evening, the proposed operating budget, and if all of those articles were to pass, the estimated tax rate for 2022 would increase 35 cents. That would be to $5.63 from $5.28. On a $100,000 home, that would be a town tax increase of $35. On a $300,000 home, that would be a tax increase on the town portion only of $1.05. In a $500,000 home, the estimated tax increase would be $175. That represents a 6.629% increase. And again, that's if all warrant articles pass. We will summarize this again after we go through all of the warrant articles. Madam Chairman, I'll hand it back to you. I believe that Luke Freidenberg is going to read the first warrant article into the record.
That's right. Article 11. Luke?
Thank you, Jim and Linda. Article 11, Pop Whalen Renovation and Expansion Project Bond, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,972,951 for the purpose of structural replacement, expansion, renovations, and equipment replacement at the Pop Whalen Ice Arena. Further, to authorize the issuance of not more than $4,272,951 in bonds or notes for this purpose in accordance with provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act. Further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept at least $2.7 million in donations from the Friends of Pop Whalen for this purpose. Also, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid grants and donations, if any, which may be available for said project that may reduce the amount to bond and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. The estimated rate, tax rate impact for 2022 is zero per 1,000 assessed valuation. For 2023, it is zero per 1,000 assessed valuation. For 2024, it is 12 cents per 1,000 assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero. It is further recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. This article requires a three-fifths majority vote to pass. The Pop Whalen Ice Arena is not only a place where families gather to skate and play hockey, but a place where memories are made by our children. The Friends of Pop seek to turn this venue into a year-round attraction for the town of Wolfboro that will extend its current opportunities and capabilities and will finally give Wolfboro a year-round complex that will better serve our youth and community. It should be noted that the Friends of Pop have raised, up until this point, more than $2.6 million, which goes to say for how much the community supports this project. The building has aged for over 30 years, and during that time, has struggled with moisture issues that have caused some serious issues with the building. Building codes have changed over time, as well as the current roof is insufficient to meet today's snow loads, which poses serious danger. This project will greatly enhance the town and will be a huge improvement from the current rink, and that's why I support it. That's why I'm asking for your vote. I'll now pass it over to Town Manager, Mr. Pinio.
Thanks, Luke. So this is a unique opportunity. We've been looking at the Pop Whalen Ice Arena Art Center for a number of years, trying to come forward with a project. We had all kinds of architectural plans, but it wasn't until this year, when we secured some engineering plans, that we were able to really come up with a plan that works for the ice arena. Unfortunately, that comes at some greater expenses. To first make some references to the 2019 master plan, it's referred to in the Communities' Facilities Chapter. Pop Whalen Ice Arena has the potential for becoming an important element in the town's drive toward a four-season economy on page 53. This cannot be done under the current structure. It's not recommended to put a dehumidification unit in there, and there are other issues associated with it. Within the Natural Resources Chapter, the goal is Wolfboro needs to continue to provide recreation opportunities in all seasons of the year for residents and guests. Page 132. The Pop Whalen Ice Arena is located at the optimal location for outdoor activities, those being cycling, cross-country skiing, hiking, plethora of outdoor activity, not to mention being able to ski at the Alpine Hill, Abenaki, and the indoor activities associated with hockey. I believe they also play curling and figure skating at that location. Most communities have this as an outdoor venue. Unfortunately, with the warmer temperatures, those outdoor venues are becoming more and more difficult. Within the implementation plan, the goal, number two, plan for newly constructed or expanded facilities, and specifically 2.6, develop the Pop Whalen Ice Arena into a four-season recreational center, page 186 of our master plan. As we work through this this summer, our first engineer that came on site with our architect said right off the bat that we are not able to expand the facility because it does not meet current snow loads based on current code. And it would take some significant modifications to do that. At that point, we felt it important to get a second opinion, so we reached out to an independent contractor who specializes in metal buildings. He came in, spent two days on site, went through it, determined that the main frames are only adequate to support a snow load, a 40 pounds per square foot uniform snow load. Does not meet code. So we've got problems here as the building stands alone, not to mention the potential of being able to add on. So the question is, can we repair the existing facility? We could. We could do some welding, which would be a very lengthy process, but then it would bring us to a point where we just barely meet current codes. We'd still be dealing with a 35-year-old structure, and most likely, we still would not be able to put an addition on. With that said, all the roof purlins would still have to be removed, the sprinkler system would have to be removed, the electrical would have to be removed. For all of that infrastructure to be reinstalled, it's estimated to be $1.8 million. So what's our problem? The manufacturer of the existing building's no longer in business. We hired an engineer specializes in metal buildings. Building doesn't meet code, can't be expanded, and I don't believe we'd find a contractor to put new siding and roofing on a code-deficient structure. Demolition of the building is expensive because we have to protect the refrigerated surface, so the building would have to be taken apart one piece at a time, just like it was constructed. If you've ever had the opportunity to be the beat of this facility, you've seen the headquarters of Parks and Rec. It's not a wonderful facility for our Parks and Rec administration to work out of. That will be corrected with this project. And we're experiencing cost escalations. For example, the dehumidification unit in 2019 was $157,000. Today, it's $192,440. So what's our solution? We can do nothing. The building will continue to deteriorate. It'll be inefficient, and it'll lead to eventual closure. We could do the existing repairs to meet code. It's very expensive. There's no cost benefit to it, and it's not a realistic option for a 35-year-old building. We could replace the entire structure, which is what we're proposing. It's expensive. It'll lead to greater use, year-round facility, increased ice time in the fall and spring, better programming, improved efficiency, a safe facility for years to come. Right now, we're seeing very attractive low-interest rates on loans. This building will be designed to be able to accept a future-mounted solar roof unit, and we have a wonderful working relationship with the Friends of Pop Whalen. Here's a couple of pictures, some of the roof leaks that they're dealing with on the ice, as well as the humidity problems. You can't hardly see the ice from where the fans watch this. How's this going to get allocated out? The town is going to be responsible for $3.3549,202 of the bond, or 84% is what we've rounded it to. The Enterprise Fund will take up $723,749,000. That's how we get to the total bonded amount of $2.4 million. And here's an example of what you might be looking at if you vote for this article. It will be a whole new building, other than the existing block in the front of the building. That will be completely rehabbed, but it'll be a whole new structure. And there's the design of the inside. This is very similar to the design that's been worked on since 2014, and we look forward to you coming out and voting one way or the other on this project. That's the end of Article 11. Luke, if you've got any closing notes.
Okay. Next article is number 12, and again, that's Luke.
Article 12, Seasonal Water Line Replacement Bond, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the purpose of replacing existing seasonal water lines with buried water mains throughout the water system. Further, to authorize the issuance of $500,000 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, grants, and donations, if any, which may be available for said project and that may reduce the amount to bond and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. Notwithstanding the general obligation nature of the bonds, it is the intention that this product shall be paid by the Water System Enterprise Fund and will not result in any increase in the tax rate. The estimated tax rate impact in 2022 is zero per $1,000 of assessed evaluation. In 2023, it's $0 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. In 2024, it's zero per 1,000 assessed valuation. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. It is recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. It requires a three-fifths majority vote to pass. As Wolfboro continues to upgrade and replace its water system, seasonal water lines have been identified as an area in need of upgrade. Currently, some members of our community rely on these seasonal water lines for their everyday water needs. This system is prone to failure, and such breaks can lead to those that depend on this system being out of service until they can be fixed. Because there is no effect on the tax rate, it is funded by the current water system. I now have Mr. Ford here that will describe more information on this article.
Thank you. David Ford, Director of Water Sewer Utilities. This has been a longstanding problem. Many years ago, the water system expanded to cottages and houses along the waterfront. It was a nicety, but some of these lines were laid back 40, 50 years ago, and they go cross-country. And here's, we got a picture of a couple, looking at Waltz Lane and Museum Shores, and one at Albee Beach, which is really another situation, the next which you can see, we leave the underground system, come out to a seasonal line, and then we run these lines above ground. We have about six miles of these pipes servicing over 220 customers, and we've been cited by DES that this is not good practice, and we need to fix it. We did a pilot project last year, and that kind of led us to this next phase of the work. We're looking at $500,000 in a specific project. If you can go to the next slide, that's actually the debt schedule, but we're looking at Waltz Lane, which is a kind of a dead-end system. It's a small private road with six services. Museum Shores, McCarthyiana, which is down behind the Libra Museum. We have about 21 services out there. And one of the more important ones, even though it's not many services, Albee Beach, the Boat Museum. The Albee Beach is a public facility that gets very heavy use with the new restroom facilities we have out there, and that one is fed by a line that goes 2,000 feet through the swamp, so we're very concerned about that. So this is our cost estimate, and we also have additional engineering so we can continue to monitor these and inspect them and continue on this program. We hope we have support on this very important project. Thank you.
Okay. Next warrant article is 13, Dock Side Upgrade Phase Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 for the purpose of reconstructing and upgrading the Wolfboro Bay Commercial Docks and Wharf. Further, to authorize the issuance of $700,000 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to comply, apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all the laws applicable to said project, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other action or to pass any other vote related thereto. The estimated tax impact 2022 is zero per thousand. 2023 is four cents per thousand. 2024, three cents per thousand of assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, four to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, seven to one. And a three-fifths majority vote required. This warrant article is the third phase of a four-phase plan to address the Wolfboro Bay docks and seawall. The commercial dock decking will be replaced, and the dock structure will be upgraded. The Transportation Chapter, the master plan, Goal 5.2 states, promote access to Wolfboro Village Core by boat through dock improvements and potential dock expansion per the Thai and Baum report and the Dock Committee. The Infrastructure Chapter of the master plan under docks, boats, ramps recommend complete necessary upgrades to the dockside docks infrastructure to ensure the existing infrastructure is sound. This warrant article is supported by the Town Dock Committee, and improvements are based on the Thai and Baum report. I urge you to support this warrant article, and I'll turn it over to you, Dave.
Thank you. Yes, this again, if people have been downtown, you see, we've been working on the docks. We have already, Phase 1 and 2, dealt with the residential or the finger docks, and this one is dealing with more the commercial docks. As we stated, the problem is just the infrastructure. It was over 20 years ago, the last time they were decked, and we have some structural issues with these. So this also article does include a small expansion where we have kind of a space that's not being used, or we'll have a drop-off area. And I want you to go to the next slide. This just shows the schedule and the phasing. So right now, we're looking at the Phase 3, in which we are doing the engineering and permitting currently, and if this goes through, construction would begin in the fall of 2022, with everything being complete by the spring of '23. It's not easy for the contractors to work in the winter, but that's the time when no one's using the docks, so that works out well. We have a few pictures showing what we're looking at. So this is a slide of the existing conditions, showing the area where we have some problems. At the corner, where we have the stamped concrete next to the big dolphin where the mountain ties up to, those big stones are kind of separating from underneath, so that has to be pulled apart and rebuilt. That's part of this project there. Along the dock facing out towards the lake, needs to have some riprap at the toe of the slope to reinforce it, and then all the members of the surface will be replaced. The next picture shows, the next frame shows the actual conditions, and you can see the disrepair of the piles and the dolphins where they're broken. And where, on the bottom right, you can see the granite wall and the slab where some of that's coming apart. That's what will be taken apart up to where that fence is. Next picture, this is a close-up of that one particular area, right where that brick stamped concrete is. That'll be removed and fixed. And then on the left-hand side, you'll see the existing finger. That's an area where we're going to put another lower dock, and that's going to be specifically used for drop-offs, taxi purposes, for food delivery, things like that. So that's going to be another benefit of it. I think we have one more slide, and this kind of shows where that extra dock would go and where the ramp would go down to. That, I think we're looking at trying to minimize the ramp access, and we might be able to access it from the other side, so we're still working on the final design there. Again, I think this is a very, this is another cross-section showing the details of the repair being done underneath in the waterside. So like we say, this is very important to us, the Mount Washington, the commercial boats that come in, and we look forward to your support on this project. Thank you.
Next article is 14, and then Brad, this is yours.
Yes, thank you. Article 14, Port Whalen Drainage Upgrades, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $430,290 for the purpose of securing drainage easements in Port Whalen and constructing an adequate stormwater drainage system. Further, to authorize the issuance of $231,203 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act. Further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept at least $100,000 in donations from the Port Whalen Association for this purpose. Also, to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to participate in the State Revolving Fund, RSA 486.14, established for this purpose, and to allow the Board of Selectmen to accept such monies as become available from the federal and state governments, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action or to pass any other vote relating thereto. The town has received New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, American Rescue Plan Act grant in the amount of $199,000. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is zero per $1,000 assessed valuation. In 2023, the impact would be zero per $1,000 assessed valuation, and in 2024, would be the tax rate impact would be five cents per $1,000 assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero, and a three-fifths majority vote is required to pass this bond. Port Whalen is a fairly large development constructed back in the 1960s. The entire development slopes down toward Winter Harbor and discharges all of stormwater runoff in a localized area into Winter Harbor, creating an increase of pollution and damaging the waterfront. With increased awareness and improving engineering technologies available, the town is committed to continue its efforts to remediate the effects of stormwater runoff as demonstrated with the Kerry Beach project, which was just completed. The town has received a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, American Rescue Act plan grant in the amount of $199,000, a commitment of $100,000 from the Port Whalen Association, and the possibility of a loan forgiveness of $23,110. So I'd ask for your support for this warrant article, and I'll turn it over to Dave Ford for further details.
Thank you, Brad. Again, that's the problem. It's the pollution of Winter Harbor. We hate to say that, but it's a bad word, but it's what it is. It's increased stormwater runoff from all the hundred lots, that the garage, the driveways, the road, right-of-way. That runoff is focused in the right-of-way, in drainage, and what happens is it ends up down the bottom of the hill, damaging the waterfront. It's also compounded because it's not owned by the town, it's owned by the Property Owners Association. However, most of the drainage does come from town right-of-way. So our solution was, we started off with a sub watershed study. We started looking at this problem and trying to figure out where the water's coming from. We've been working with the Property Owners Association, have met with them numerous times out on site. We've met with them with the state and consultants to get them part of this. We have developed different alternatives and came up with a concept plan that we met with the New Hampshire DES Wetlands bureaus, and we've got a good green light on how to get it permitted. We went forward and applied for the SRF, the State Revolving Loan Funds and Opera Grants, and we were very happy to receive a big chunk of that for this project. Right now, again, we're working with the association, so we're going to secure easements for the building and maintaining of the stormwater system, and in return, the association is going to agree to provide the easement with the financial commitment. Our schedule is to, because it's an Opera grant, and we have to get all this approved, our hope is we start the engineering and permitting in the spring and get all the easements, all that squared away. Probably we'll have a public hearing, just so everyone knows what's going on, the details. We'll be looking at bidding it out in the, this time next year, the fall, winter, with construction being in 2023. I think we have a little overview now, for some of you may not be familiar, but this is Winter Harbor, and the area outlined is the Port Whalen and Winter Haven roads. You can't see real clear, but that's the hill. All that water heads down to Winter Harbor, and Winter Harbor is kind of unique in that it's landlocked, that there's no flushing water in this area, and as a result, pollution can cause more problems. Two years ago, we had a cyanobacteria outbreak in this area, so we do, very concerned about that. We formed the committee, the Wolfboro Waters Committee, and we're working many ways, but this is one of the biggest projects now. Next picture, again, there's a blow-up showing the watershed area from Winter Haven, which leads down to the brooks, which is on our left-hand side when you're looking at that picture. Okay, next. And this is really the ugly part of it. This is what happens, the beach getting washed out under these events, when the drainage system is overloaded, leaves plug it, and it's left to run wild and wash out the beach and the areas around that area. So we've come up with a preferred alternative. So at the end of the town right-of-way, which is on this, shown in red at the top of this drawing, the new lines would be the blue lines coming down. It would be an oversized piping that would allow us to be able to take all the drainage down the steep hill into a structure, which would take the energy out of it and then get it down into the lake in an acceptable fashion. So there's a lot of detail here. This is what we'll go over with the engineering and the permitting. Here is the bottom line on the financing. The total project cost is just over $430,000. Again, the grant funding from Opera, just under $200,000. So the amount to be bonded is right there, $231. The Port Whalen Association has committed $100,000 over this project, which is going to be, again, a 10-year loan, and what we're looking at, potentially a loan forgiveness of 15% of the loan amount. So the net impact to the town is just over $100,000, and I think it's a great, and why should we be paying for this? That's a good question, because it affects us all. The waters are our waters. Our tax dollars are based on having clean water. If Winter Harbor, or God forbid, any of our waters were to turn green, would have a very negative impact. We feel it's a great project, and we hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Article 15, Luke?
Article 15, Sewer Pump Station Upgrade, Mill Street, SRF Bond, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,608,000 for the purpose of replacing the Mill Street Sewer Pump Station, electrical equipment, and rehabilitation of the existing building. Further, to authorize the issuance of $1,800 in bonds or notes for the project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to participate in the State Revolving Fund, SRF RSA 486-486.14, established for this purpose, and to allow the Board of Selectmen to accept such monies as become available from federal, state governments, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action or to pass any other vote relating thereto. The town has received a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, American Rescue Act grant in the amount of $672,000. The estimated tax rate impact in 2022 is zero per 1,000 in evaluation. In 2023, it's zero per 1,000 assessed valuation, and in 2024, it's six cents per 1,000 of assessed valuation. Is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. It is further recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. This requires a three-fifths majority vote to pass this. This requires a three-fifths majority vote to pass. The station is aging and has been in, has been in use since the 1940s. It saw an upgrade in the 1990s. Water and sewer in Wolfborough is, you know, is a commodity that, it's a luxury, and we've, and this building has served, you know, the town for a long period of time. It is in need of an upgrade. It is a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing that we were able to get this grant. It's a, it should be a, it should be noted that, you'll hear more about more grants that the town's gotten. Dave Ford's done an excellent job in, in securing the town money from, that's available to the, from the state and the federal government for these projects, and it goes a long way to be said that it's really helping, you know, keep the impact to the town done. But this is a vital, vital part of the sewer system in Wolfborough, and I fully support it. Now, I'll hand it off to Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Luke. That's a good point. Right now, seems like we've got a lot of projects going on, and it is because we've been putting them off. This one in particular, Mill Street was built in the 1940s on the WPA program. It was upgraded in the 1990s, and then it was identified in the 2006 to be replaced at that time at a price tag of $1,500,000. Unfortunately, we were busy with a lot of other things, and the project got delayed. We had the F loan disposal issue, which went on for many years, and now we have that finally taken care of. We had the sewer INI problem, which is coming back, and that was an issue. And then we've had emergency repairs, we've been working at, at the wastewater treatment plant. So what we've done now is, last year, you can recall, we funded money to do a study on both our pump stations. We did that at the right time, because that gave us the basis to submit for these applications, and the funds we were able to secure through the SRF in the loan. So those preliminary evaluations done in '21, that came up with the cost for the engineering and the construction and the contingency. Right now, we're very nervous about prices and contingencies and escalations. Our schedule is upon this being approved, if it gets voted forward, then the summer we will start the engineering, and next year, we'd be going out to bid and construction in 2023. As we stated earlier, we got a great Opera Grant of $672,000, and they're looking at bonding just over $1 million. Again, very important project. Again, if you're not sure, Mill Street, this is right down by the waterfront, right by the Full Belly Deli, and again, very critical infrastructure, probably one of the most important buildings in our town that you don't know about, because if it doesn't work, then we have problems. Again, we appreciate your support on this project.
Yes, the next article is 16, Luke?
Article 16, Water Treatment Plant and System Upgrades, SRF Bond. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,470,000 for the purpose of engineering and construction, and constructing water treatment plant and water system upgrades. Further, to authorize the issuance of $735,000 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to participate in the State Revolving Fund, SRF RSA 486-14, established for this purpose, and to allow the Board of Selectmen to expend such monies as become available from federal and state governments, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action or to pass any other vote relating thereto, notwithstanding the general obligation nature of the bonds. It is the intention that this project shall be paid by the Water System Enterprise Fund and will not result in any increase in the tax rate. The town has received a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services American Rescue Act Plan grant in the amount of $735,000. The estimated tax impact in 2022 is zero per 1,000 in assessed valuation. In 2023, it is zero for 1,000 of assessed valuation, and in 2024, it is zero per 1,000 assessed valuation. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero, and is further recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. Three-fifths majority vote required to pass. You're going to hear a lot from me tonight talk about water and sewer, different projects. And Mr. Ford, this is another project that we've been lucky enough to get a very large grant to cover a, a very good portion of this project. The, the, the system is aging, and the facility has seen a lot of use over the years. It's been very well maintained, but it is in need of upgrades, and that is why I support all water and sewer upgrades in the town of Wolfborough. I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Ford at this point.
Thank you. Again, all the problems are come aging infrastructure. We're all getting old, as our equipment's getting old. This plant was brand-new in 1996, and if you went up there today, you'd think it's still new. We do a great job, and kudos to our operators who do a great job up there. However, the guts are getting old. We also have a pressure-reducing valve station, which is at Pine Hill Cemetery. We have excess pressure, so we have to knock that pressure down as it comes into town. At the South Main tank up on the high school, we also have control valves up there that are old. This system is critical to the success of bringing you clean water. We are looking at this, bundling all these projects that we have put on the list and be able to get it into the state for this loan application. That's great, and this is going to help us increase our reliability. The next slide kind of shows what the schedule is. Again, we have did a detailed water asset management plan. Again, something the Selectmen have pushed us, and that's good, because that gives us the basis for all what we have. Now we know what we have, and how much they are, and that helps us when we go for the grants, because the state says, oh, they know what they're doing, we have our stuff together. So that helped us. So what we've done now is, we're going to bundle the equipment that we need to get replaced, the process upgrades, and the energy efficiencies. We're also going to add those, because we had an energy study done, and we had to put them off, and now's the time to do all at once. So we're going to try to increase our energy efficiency also. So the hope is to get that out to bid early in 2022 and start construction in the winter, fall next year. Again, we have applied for the grant, so we get $735 of free money, and this is a strict bond. Again, very important project, and hopefully your support on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next article is number seven, Brian?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yep.
Article seventeen, Water Pump Upgrades, SRF Bond. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $720,000 for the purpose to evaluate, design, and permit the replacement of any existing lead or galvanized service connections within the water distribution system. Further, to authorize the issuance of $358,695 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to participate in the State Revolving Fund, RSA, excuse me, SRF RSA 486.14, established for this purpose, and to allow the Board of Selectmen to expend such monies as become available from the federal and state government, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action or to pass any other voting related thereto, notwithstanding the general obligations, nature of the bonds. It is the intention that the project shall be paid by the Water System Enterprise Fund and will not result in any increase to the tax rate. The town has received a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services American Rescue Plan Act grant in the amount of $330,305. The estimated tax rate impact for 2022, 2023, and 2024 is zero dollars per thousand assessed valuation. This was recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero, and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. This was identified on the 2017 Water Asset Management Plan. The pipes, and Mr. Ford will, will be much clearer than I, were installed, the mains in the 1890s. And again, though we have a great water system in town, efficiencies are important, and the leakage is the biggest concern with any water system. And we can follow the other projects, be, have the engineering done, have everything in place, so that when further grants and monies come available to us, we'll be ready to go. Mr. Ford, it's all yours.
Thank you. Yes, this is again, a problem, aging infrastructure, different time zone. We talk about the plant being 20, 25 years old, components don't last, you know, in the, but the water pipe, 130-year-old water pipe. This was laid by hand back in the 1890s. We have three miles of what we call vintage water pipes. Back in the day, cast iron with oakum and lead joints, potentially lead goosnecks, and we are very concerned about that now. We have done surveys, and we believe we have a corrosion control which controls that lead and copper issues. However, the state and the feds are upping the requirements now. Within three years, we have to certify that there is no lead within our system. The only way to do that is to survey these, we may end up having to dig up some of these lines to see for sure. But we're talking about 130-year-old pipe and the loss of water. Our unaccountable water has gone up dramatically in the last couple of years. We feel some of the seasonal water lines, some of the old lines. The reliability issue is a concern. If we have a major break in town, it could cause incredible disruptions. And then this past month, it seems as though we ran a little bad cycle with water breaks. We had another break today, they got fixed, so that's the good news. Again, it was identified in the asset management plan. So our solution, again, what we're looking at is a detailed, or looking at all the details and prioritizing them. Then we want to do is coordinate that work with other infrastructure work. So this money is going to be for surveying, doing a lot of engineering, but also will come with it, if we're going to put the new water line in, we might as well look at the drainage, the sewer, and the electrical. So our engineering for this is over $700,000, and that's based on doing three miles of water main that will end up being about $7 million of construction work over the next, say, 10 years. Our schedule will be, it'll be a two-year project with the hope of having the prioritized list by the fall of 2022. And again, we were able to get 50% or a little bit of this in a grant. So the next picture shows the, the total project cost with the grant of $361,000 and the amount to be bonded, just a little bit less than that. Great project, but this will then be more. And again, we will be looking at, and if you live in the section where the old mains are, we'll be knocking on your doors, looking at doing the, the survey, coming into your basement, looking for these old pipes. Again, we hope we'll get your support on this important project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next article is 18, Brian?
Operating Budget. Shall the town raise and appropriate, as an operating budget, not including appropriations by the special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $29,753,295. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $29,511,151, which is the same as last year's operating budget, with certain adjustments required by the previous action of the town or by law of the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Roman numeral 10, and Roman numeral 16 to take up the issue of revising operating budget only. Estimated tax impact 2022, $4.79 per thousand of assessed valuation, recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. Majority vote required.
Thank you, Brian. So this is our operating budget. We, we started this back in July when department heads received budget guidelines. From that point, we moved into September where I met with each individual department, went through their budget, began to learn their budgets, see where we may be able to gain some efficiencies or not. We brought that budget to the Board of Selectmen. They went through the entire budget process, looked at the budget, they made recommend, we made recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for raises, which were taken on. And then we moved into late November when we got into the Budget Committee process. We met with the Budget Committee, I want to say 16 times, going through the operating budget line by line multiple times, making some reductions on some capital outlay projects. But all in all, this is a solid budget. A lot of the increases here are related to costs that are outside of our control, with those being New Hampshire retirement system increases, health insurance increases, property liability increases, and contracted services. When we get into the deliberative section, the chairman will go through the budget line by line, as he did the other night at the budget hearing. We hope to see you out at the budget hearing and vote for this budget as we move forward through 2022. Thank you. Linda?
Thank you. Article 19, Dave?
Article 19, ASME Contract Agreement. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the cost items included in a one-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Board of Selectmen and the local 534 of the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, ASME, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits current staffing levels. Year one, 2022, wages $83,170. 2022, benefits $21,399, for a total increase of $104,569. And further to raise and appropriate $104,569 for the current physical year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed to the increase in wages and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid to current staffing levels. Estimated tax rate impact on 2022 is four cents per thousand assessed valuation, recommended by the Board of Selectmen at vote of five to zero, recommended by the Budget Committee, 701. This again is a one-year contract that was done between the Selectmen and the ASME staff. Jim?
Thanks, Dave. So this was a good contract negotiation this year. I believe we met with the ASME group four times. We got a lot of language from a management standpoint that we wanted cleaned up in the contract. One of those items reflects loss of license. Under the previous contract, the loss of license, we would have to reassign that employee to another position. That's no longer there. The other interesting thing about this contract, effective February of 2022, in order to have a commercial driver's license, you have to go through some formalized training. That in itself makes our commercial drivers of town vehicles that much more valuable to us, and we felt as a result of that, we needed to compensate them. So we were able to come up with an agreement that compensates these people for holding their CDL and driving those pieces of heavy equipment in some less-than-opportune weather as we've experienced this past week. The other interesting thing about this contract is it represents 42 people. Those 42 people have increased by nine. So when you look at the number of 104,000 compared to last year of a $47,000 warrant article, that's why we see such a significant increase. 35,000 of that is based on the firefighters who have joined this union. That represents nine employees. Those nine employees work 48 hours a week versus 40 or 35 as other members of the collective bargaining unit, and they also have a contribution rate to the New Hampshire retirement system in the neighborhood of 30% versus 14%. This is a good contract. This takes care of our employees for another year. They're very excited about the contract, and we are very excited about the contract. Linda?
The next article is Article 20, Brad?
Yes, thank you. Article 20, Electric Power Reconstruction of Turtle Island Road. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of $270,000 for the purpose of reconstructing the overhead electrical distribution system on the Turtle Island Tap, which includes the areas of Camp Road, Lady Frances Drive, Wishingwell Lane, and Governor Shore Road. The amount of $270,000 shall be funded from Electric, from the Electrical Enterprise Fund surplus. This expenditure will not result in any tax, any increase in the tax rate. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is zero per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero, and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. The municipal electric department is continually presenting projects to improve the availability and reliability of the electric service to its customers. As I just stated, the cost of these improvements is built into its current rate structure, so there is no increase in the tax rate for this project. So I'd ask for your support for this warrant article, and I'll turn this over to Barry for further details.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Barry Muccio, Director of Operations for the Municipal Electric Department. So as you are aware, we've been going through the process over the last 20 years of converting our electrical system over to 15 KV standards. This happens to be the next step in that process. This is a two-and-a-half-mile little tap that's sort of in an outlier area on the eastern border of our town that traverses the shoreline of Lake Wentworth. It does feed seasonal and some year-round homes out there. A lot of this tap, this line that goes through the woods, is off-road, sort of links road to roads out there. Whenever we have storm events, based on its age and some of the clearance issues we have, we have a lot of trouble out there as far as outages, lines down, wires down. So again, about a mile and a half a line, 16 transformers. We'd need to do the necessary trimming and right-of-way easements to perform this work with the private property owners. But yeah, this is a good project to pick off and secure the reliability of our system in the Route 109 East area. Appreciate your support on this one. Thank you.
Okay. Next article is Article 21, Bridge Falls Path Lighting Replacement. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $252,000 for the purpose of replacing the electric system to include underground conduit, lamp posts, and lighting fixtures along the Bridge Falls Path, which runs from Fosfield to Center Street. The funding for this project shall be paid for by the transfer of up to $42,000 from the existing Bridge Falls Path Capital Reserve Fund and raising $210,000 by general taxation. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:76 and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. The estimated tax rate for 2022 is 0.09 per thousand of assessed value, recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. This warrant article will replace the electric system and install new lighting along the Bridge Falls Path. This path provides a beautiful walk from downtown Wolfboro along Back Bay to the privately-owned Cotton Valley Trail. The town purchased the Bridge Falls Path land from the state of New Hampshire in 1990 and paid $325,000 to the state. This path is used very heavily in the spring, summer, and fall by Wolfboro residents and town guests. The path lighting system is 28 years old and in desperate need of repair. Over the last two years, the voters have approved placing $20,000 per year in a capital reserve account to save for this project. This warrant article is asking the voters to fund $210,000 from general taxation and to use the capital reserve fund in the amount of $42,000. Please support this warrant article, and I will turn the presentation over to Christine and to Barry.
Thank you, Linda. So as you said, Christine Collins has been working on this project for a couple of years, adding money into a capital reserve, recognizing that a problem out there exists. It's a beautiful asset to the community. Anybody that walks in Wolfboro has certainly walked this path, provides a really nice link from the downtown to the Center Street area. So I jumped in this year to assist a little bit on the expertise side. You can see the photo on the left represents some of the current conditions out there. These are approximately 30-year-old lighting. They're mounted on old, in essence, wooden utility poles that I believe were used when they went in. Much of the electrical that traverses from pole to pole underground is not in conduit. Many of the connectors are open. You can see some exposed wires at the base of the poles where they join, you know, to meet each light. Several of them are knocked over. There's a few different style lights out there over the years that have been replaced and picked away at. So there's a little bit of everything out there, and it really needs to be cleaned up, brought up today's standards to be safe, number one, and aesthetically will greatly improve that trail as well as its safety of walking out there. So the scope of the project, there's one electrical service that we need to replace, which feeds sort of the Center Street area of that project. We would trench, install all-new underground wiring, conduits. We'd replace all the wooden pole structures with precast aluminum-style posts, something that looks of the date and standard of other lights we have in town, as well with new light heads. Just one thing to keep in mind, although we have some ideas of what we'd be looking for, style lights, we haven't nailed that down completely. We'd certainly bring some options to the board when we get to that point if the project proceeds. But that is our intent, to sort of match our lighting in town, like the bridges, et cetera. Here you see a budget we went through. Not a cheap project, but these projects aren't nowadays. The price of material, lights, really went crazy, along with fuel, et cetera. So $250,000 budget is where it came in at. And we do appreciate your support on this one. To me, this is a no-brainer, really, but, you know, greatly improved the scenario down there.
Yep. I just agree with Barry wholeheartedly. I was down there, I had a tour with another group who wanted to see what we were talking about, and it was heavily used with bikers, walkers, kids, just everyone's down there. So it is time for an upgrade down there. And my concern is just the exposed wires and stuff like that. We've kind of band-aided as much as we can, so it's time to upgrade it and bring it to the standards of Wolfboro.
Okay, thank you. Next article is 22, and I'll turn it back to Luke.
Article 22, Sewer Pump Station Upgrade, Laner Street. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,270,000 for the purpose of engineering and constructing a new Laner Street sewer pump station. To allow the Board of Selectmen to expend such monies as become available from federal and state governments and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action or to pass any other vote relating thereto. This project to be funded from the Rapid Infiltration Basin Lawsuit Settlement. Therefore, this project will not result in any increase in the tax rate. The estimated tax impact for 2022 is 0 per 1,000. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0. It is further recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. This particular pump station went online back in the 1930s. It was called for on the plan to be upgraded in 2006. There are safety and reliability issues here, and I'm now going to hand it over to Mr. Ford.
Thank you. We have a few pictures of this site. It's down by the back of the supermarket off of Laner Street, in the sandwich shop there. It was built, again, in the 1940s, and it was a WPA project similar to Mill Street. It has very tight situation, and it's very much in need of being replaced. It was upgraded 1990s to a suction lift pump station, but it was really tight and probably didn't meet all the codes, definitely does not meet the codes now. It was identified in 2006 to be replaced, but again, because of other issues, we put it off. However, now it's got to the point where we're really concerned about the safety and the reliability. So this project is a little different. We did not apply for grants on this one because we knew we had some money coming, and we felt with a little red, less red tape, we might be able to get it done a little less costly, and there was only so much great money to go out, and we had a lot of needs. So again, this project right now is scheduled to start, actually, we're working on it now. We met with the electrical engineer today, going about the sizing of the generators, and we will continue with the engineering and try to have it ready to go out to bid this summer. Our budget is right up there with the engineering, construction, and a contingency. Our hope is to, again, have it out to bid in the winter and be in construction this time next year. Again, another very important station that needs to be upgraded, and we appreciate your support on this project.
Thank you. Next article is 23, and it's Dave.
Yeah, Article 23, Public Safety Building Construction Grade Bid Documents. We have been working for quite a few years for the dispatch. Police fire departments have all outgrown current facilities. Solution: Construction documents will secure more accurate pricing. Currently have architectural concept plans for police department. More work required for fire department. Beginning, plan began in 2017. All options are very expensive. Phase construction. 2022, Ad Hoc Public Safety Building Committee to Hold Public Meetings on Current Concept. Police Station New. Fire Department Renovation to Existing Building. Fire Apparatus by Replacement. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim. This has been an ongoing project for quite a few years, and we're at a point where we need to get bid documents so that we can finalize the plans and the costs.
Yeah, so Dave summed it up nicely, and I'll go ahead and read the warrant article so that you understand it. Article 23, Public Safety Building Construction Grade Bid Documents. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of developing construction-grade bid documents for the public safety services facility planning. Funding for this project shall be paid for by transferring up to $75,000 from the existing Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund. Furthermore, passage of this article will authorize $225,000 in funds be raised by general taxation. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:7, Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022: 0.09 per thousand of assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 611. As Dave said, this is an ongoing project. The hopes this year are that we will be able to get some more definitive pricing based on construction-grade bid documents, get the architect into, hold some public hearings, get the information out to the Board of Selectmen as to what the current concept is looking like. And this, we're really looking at a phased approach. So the first phase would be if we stay the route we're on now. Phase 1 would be to build a new police station, relocate the police into that new facility. We would go from there, renovate the existing public safety building administrative office to, for the fire department to operate out of, and then a future complete renovation of the apparatus bay. More to come. I think we actually have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, and with that, I'll hand it back to Linda.
Okay. Next article is 24, Townwide Historical Resource Study. And we have two members here from the Historical Commission. And read the warrant article and give your presentation and state your name.
Yes. On behalf of the Heritage Commission, Maggie Steer, Chair. I'm Ann Blodgett, Acting Secretary Suzanne Ryan, Vice Chair. We are here to present warrant article number 24. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 to hire a preservation consultant to carry out a townwide historic resources survey that will serve as a foundation for future efforts to protect its historic character and help manage growth and change. Completing this survey is identified as a high priority in the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Chapter of the Master Plan and is one of the primary purposes of the Heritage Commission. The survey will provide an overview of the community, including its geography, history, architecture, patterns of development, and important themes in its history. It will contain an extensive bibliography, maps, and listings of potential and already identified historic resources.
Can you see this, Mary?
Yes. Oh. Let's see. Oh, thank you. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:7, Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact 2022 is 1 cent per thousand assessed valuation, recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. My co-host?
What is a historic survey? Protecting our historic character is a top priority of the Master Plan and the basis of work for the Heritage Commission. There's a field of professionals working to identify, designate, regulate, and preserve historic buildings and other historic resources such as bridges, stone culverts, railroad trestles, dams, and even cultural landscape. A townwide survey, also known as an inventory, completed using standardized statewide methodology, gives us a broad-brush picture of our historic assets and our framework to build upon. A survey is the foundation for all future preservation activities. It provides a baseline listing of what's most important and what needs further analysis. It usually takes about a year. Ann?
Thank you, Suzanne. How will Wolfboro benefit? It provides a vital planning tool to help town boards and commissions manage growth and change. This will offer greater understanding of the places that tell our collective stories and also provides a foundation for future preservation efforts of historic buildings, structures, and landscapes townwide.
What will the survey do for us? The survey will call out potential National Register eligibility sites and districts and identify representative structures for each major period of the town's history. It will tell us what we have, where there are opportunities and threats, and where to focus our energies, whether regulatory or non-regulatory. A local historic district is regulatory, and Heritage Commission is not. There are federal tax incentives for rehabbing income-producing historic properties and local tax abatements for historic bonds, which we have in place currently. Resources owned by nonprofits and municipalities, if they are listed on determined eligibility for the state National Register of Historic Places, qualify for preservation grants and L-CHIP. Ann, you're up.
I guess we're going with the whole gig. Who does the survey? A qualified preservation consultant, usually with a master's degree in historic preservation, knows all these requirements and standards. Determining what is historic, age, significance, integrity, requires a broad knowledge of history and architectural styles and an eye to recognize changes from the original. It also takes the experience and ability to locate and use relevant materials, photographically document existing structures, and synthesize data into a well-written and illustrated report and bibliography. While a townwide survey doesn't evaluate every single building, it does picture and describe those with the greatest significance and integrity.
Who uses the survey? The survey will be a valuable resource to guide town departments, boards, and commissions as they plan for the future. Its information could be of use to teachers and nonprofits such as the Historical Society, Watershed Association, and other nonprofits. This is a great way to build knowledge and understanding of the past and the places that make Wolfboro distinctive. It is also a foundational tool for helping to assure that as Wolfboro grows and changes, our actions will support our stated goals of maintaining the historic character of Wolfboro. The Heritage Commission looks forward to your continued support, and we thank you.
Thank you. Next article is 25, and that's Brad.
Yes, thank you. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,300,000 for the purpose of upgrading town roads, sidewalks, and drainage systems. To authorize funds in the amount of $1 million from the town's unassigned fund balance upgrades and $300,000 from general taxation. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:7, Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of on December 31, 2023 or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is 12 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0 and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. The Public Works Department utilizes a, or has utilized a RSMS, a road service management system, which helps provide an overview of the road systems, condition, along with hands-on approach to document road conditions and develop estimates, types of reconstruction, and timeframes to schedule their reconstruction. This year, a lot of the money is being utilized off of Forest Road, which is also in this watershed that feeds down into Winter Harbor. And as I said earlier in the article here, it's going to utilize a million dollars from the town's unassigned fund balance and only raise 300,000 from the general taxation. So I'd ask for your support for this warrant article, and I'll turn it over to Dave Ford for further explanation.
Great, thank you, Brad. Again, this is an annual one. Every year, we ask for money to fix our roads. About three years ago, we did this road surface management study, which is kind of an asset management program to look at how much we should be spending each year. The number that came up with three, four years ago was 1.3 million. So we finally got there, it's great. But it is necessary in that we're not just overlaying roads, we're rebuilding them. We really find that over, a lot of our roads originally built with inadequate base or drainage systems. And over time, and with the amount of travel, the roads break down. So what we're doing, again, is following through the program, trying to do the worst roads. And the other thing, we're trying to, we've always tried to have town forces do a lot of the work to kind of make this money go farther. But we are now bidding out the work, and we have a new system in which we're trying to bid one big project a year with engineering. It'll be kind of a standard-type project, and the town forces will work on just smaller projects in terms of overlays. So let's go on to the next slide, showing you what we plan on doing. So this year, like Brett said, we went out to bid, we engineered the set of plans for Maplewood, Berrywood, Jiminy Drive, Deer Run, and Chipmunk Lane. That whole subdivision above Whitegate Lane is also drains into the Winter Harbor area. So what we did on Pottridge Lane is what we plan on doing along these. So this is not only rebuilding the road, we're also adding drainage infrastructure so that to mitigate runoff and to kind of have small little detention basins. We also are going to be replacing some water lines in Deer Run and Chipmunk Lane. That'll be at a separate article. So that's our million dollars. That work went out to bid, and the price came in just right around a million dollars. So we're in good shape there. The rest of the work, 200,000, will be with town forces working on Haynes Hill and North Wolfboro Road. Those are roads that are gravel roads with paved hills. They're in really bad shape. We started working on it late in the year, so we're going to be doing some shim overlays and some drainage work on that. And then we have an engineering budget, so we can inspect the work we're doing this year and continue to engineer projects for next year, for 2023, I should say. So again, we appreciate your support on this very important project. Thank you.
Yes, Article 26, Brian?
So 26 relates to 25. It will be upgrading water lines for the same project that Mr. Ford just discussed. So the article is Article 26 Waterline Upgrades to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund for the purpose of upgrading existing water mains. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:7 Roman numeral six and shall lapse on December 31, 2023 or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. The estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is $0 per 1,000 assessed valuation. This was recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0 and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. Ford, it's all yours.
Thank you. Exactly. This project is directly related to the road project. We do need to replace these lines, and we're hoping to get that done prior to the road being rebuilt. So this one is in our water asset management plan. We have identified some of these areas. These particular water pipes are the wrong materials, and they're beyond their useful life, and they do need to be replaced. And again, this is on the water fund, use of the money that we have in the funds there. So this will not require any bond or any tax dollars. And we appreciate your support on that project. Thank you.
Okay, next article is 27, Brian?
Article 27 Solid Waste Site Upgrades to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of performing repairs at the solid waste facility and developing a facility's master plan. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:7 Roman numeral six and shall lapse on December 31, 2023 or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is 5 cents per thousand dollars assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0 and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. Now, I will say that I go to three places most often in the town of Wolfboro. One being the town hall, two being the supermarket, and three being the solid waste facility. Guaranteed to go to all of them every week, and I appreciate our workers at the solid waste facility. For many years, I did hard, egregious work, very, very hard, difficult work. And I think that we should try and get them as good a facility as possible going forward.
Thank you, Brian. Well, this is, again, an important one, and maybe one that we've put off a little bit too long. We have many needs in the town, and the solid waste facility is, if you've been up there, like you say, it is indeed. This particular money we're looking for is to rebuild the block retaining walls where we have our drop-off containers for construction debris and metals and whatnot. And also, we have a lot of pavement surfaces that are in disrepair that are safety issues. So we're going to be mostly working on those. And then we're also going to do a master plan, which was asked for and I think is needed to identify everything else on the facility that may need to be upgraded at some point in the future. So we'll have a long-term plan for that site. We do have the equipment is covered by the Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, but the site in this is not. So again, we appreciate your support on this important project. Thank you.
Okay, next article is Article 28 Department of Public Works Truck and Employee. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $139,600 in 2022 for the purpose of purchasing an additional one-and-a-half-ton equip for the summer, one-and-a-half-ton truck for the summer and winter road maintenance. Therefore, furthermore, to hire an additional full-time equipment operator effective July 22, July 2022 in the Department of Public Works Highway Division. This full-time equivalent operator shall become a member of the ASME Collective Bargaining Unit. Costs for 2022 are estimated as follow. Vehicle, $100,000. Position and benefits, $29,600. Total, $139,600. Shall the town approve this article? The full-time equipment operator shall become part of all future operating budgets within the Department of Public Works Highway Division. The estimated increase for the 2023 operating budget will be $79,200, which includes base wages, payroll tax, New Hampshire Retirement System contributions, and health insurance. Estimated tax rate for 2022 is 6 cents per thousand assessed value, recommended by the Board of Selectmen, 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee, 6 to 2. This warrant article is asking voters to fund a new Department, a new Public Works Department truck and a full-time employee, but fund only 2020 for a half-year starting in July. The Transportation Chapter of the Master Plan under Goal 4, Number 5 states, "Develop a policy for accepting of roads through betterment assessment process through the analysis of operating and maintenance and other factors." After the town staff and selectmen did an analysis of the Public Works Department operation and maintenance capabilities, it was clear that the Public Works employees were stretched to their limit and that the town had no capacity to add any more roads. This warrant article addresses the need to add an employee and truck to the Public Works Department so that private, so private roads can request to be taken over by the town through the betterment assessment process. Please support this warrant article. I'll turn it over to Jim, Pinio.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, this article is quite interesting. You might ask, why are we looking for additional staffing through a warrant article? Well, the real reason here is we're looking at expanding services within the Department of Public Works. That means expanding some of those roads that we currently take care of for summer and winter maintenance. Currently, the plow routes are maxed out at about three hours. If we were to bring on an additional road or development, as Linda stated, the crews are already stretched thin as it is, and it would extend the length of those routes. Now, for a normal storm, that may not be too big of a deal, but a storm that we just had this past week definitely puts more of a burden on the staff. It also puts more of a burden on the equipment. The equipment takes a beating when it is used for this type of work, and there's been no expansion of employees or equipment at the Department of Works in a number of years. We've received a number of requests for people to consider the town taking on their road as a public road, and there could be some arguments made that we would be required to take on those roads. When we brought this in front of the Budget Committee last week, you know, there was significant conversation, and it really was chicken or the egg, you know, which comes first? Do we accept the roads and then go to the Budget Committee and ask for additional staffing and an additional truck? Or do we ask for additional staffing and then an additional truck, get that approved, and then go forward to engage with these developments to determine whether or not we should take on their road as a betterment? I know that this is a tough one. I've heard that it's not a great year to do it, but at the end of the day, we've got some roads that we've got to consider taking on, and the only way we're going to be able to do that is by additional staffing and equipment. We did reach out to ask a local vendor. I actually reached out to two of them. I received a response from one of them. Estimated $58,000 a year for them to handle five miles of road. $58,000 compared to $79,000 for that full-time employee that we would have access to year-round. An additional truck seems to make good business sense. So we hope that the community supports this warrant article and adds to the staffing at the Department of Public Works so they can continue to do the wonderful work they do. Thank you. Linda?
Yes, the next article is 29, Library Landscaping. And I think we have somebody from the trustees. You want to state your name through the record, and can you see that to read it? Okay.
Hi, I'm Linda Wilberton from the Library Trustees. Article 29, Library Landscaping. To see whether the town will vote to authorize the Wolfboro Public Library Board of Trustees to expend a sum not to exceed $250,000 for the purpose of construction and installation of a design landscape plan on the property surrounding the library building. Said sum to be taken from donations and grants and will have no impact on the tax rate. Estimated tax rate impact 2022, 0 per 1,000 assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. And our new librarian, Amanda King, will address this.
Good afternoon. So this is just a short slide talking about the opportunity that's presented itself here for the town and the results that will come from solving, from engaging with this opportunity. So by fixing the landscaping around the library, we will not only be restoring the wetlands around the library, but we'll be instituting privacy screening for those nearby, the residents who are nearby who are hearing noise pollution and that kind of thing. Well, we've already started removing the invasive species and poison ivy. That's just not any fun for anyone. And we'll be beautifying the property with low-maintenance native plants. There's also been some talk about receiving a certification for pollinator plants, and that'll allow us to become more of an educational garden as well. The results will include community educational spaces, like an outdoor classroom or a storytime area, which I'm really excited about, and quiet spaces for community connection and reflection. The outdoor gardens will beautify the town corridors as people are coming in to town. And, you know, as a library director, I'm always looking for ways for us to utilize whatever space we've got to find additional grant funding that will take the burden off the town and any foundation, and we can leverage those things that we do. So this will allow us with those educational spaces to be able to say, hey, we've got this space, we want to do this program and get some of those grant funds in as well. So with that in mind, here's the space, the finished space. You're looking at it right here. This is just a, the proposed look. I think that it's mostly going to end up looking this way, but, you know, there'll be, there'll be some slight tweaks as we go along. And with that being said, this will be a joint partnership with the library and the foundation. And so I know John wants to talk to, speak to some of what the foundation will be doing, and I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you. The John Sandine, President of the Wolfboro Public Library Foundation. We have committed to raise funds to support this warrant article, and between the Library Board of Trustees' contribution and the foundation, we believe that we will be able to fund the entire warrant article that way. We've created some opportunities for people to make memorial gifts or honorary gifts to, for instance, plant a tree for a large tree or a small tree, and then other things through this property. You'll see there's a pathway around the wetlands, and we're looking to make that an inspiration pathway so that people could create a tablet that has a literary quote on it or a famous quote on it, and then those will be placed along the pathway. And this may be another educational opportunity for parents to bring their children and say, why don't you find the quote from Alice in Wonderland? And those kind of things. So these are opportunities for people to contribute to the landscaping of the library through the foundation. Thank you, and we hope you support this warrant article.
Thank you. Next article is 30, and that's Brad?
Yes, thank you. Article 30, Fire Trucks and Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $196,000 to be added to the existing fire trucks and apparatus replacement capital reserve fund, which is under the custody of the Trustees of Trust Funds, with a selectman designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is...
It's supposed to be 8 cents?
Yeah, I was going to say it shows 80, but it should, 8 cents per thousand assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. Fire Department has a detailed spreadsheet showing the life expectancy and costs for replacement of all of their major trucks and apparatus of the department. This warrant article supplies the funds for these purchases while at the same time maintaining a steady impact on the tax rate, avoiding spikes when purchases are required. I ask for your support for this warrant article, and I'll turn this over to Tom for further details.
Thank you. First of all, we would like to thank the residents and taxpayers for their support over the past years of our capital reserve program. And what we present to you this year is essentially more of the same. By way of process, in the late spring, early summer of the year, we start to review our existing capital reserve program. We update prices with vendors and review our equipment and our equipment needs that we can foresee going forward in an effort to be as lean and as accurate as possible. In 2022, we're asking for our... In 2022, we're asking for our usual, if you will, $196,000 contribution to our savings account to enable us to replace our apparatus on schedule. We have no proposed capital reserve purchase until, actually, 2024, when we hope to replace our engine four. Reasons are spelled out pretty clearly on the slide. We would expect by then to, the replacement cost to be somewhere between $750,000 and $800,000 based on current conditions. We have built escalators into our estimates to make sure that the fund will cover the anticipated cost. And again, we do review that on an annual basis. At year-end 2021, the capital reserve fund had approximately $278,000 in it. Continuing our annual contribution of $196,000 will give us in excess, slight excess of the money we would need and anticipate to replace Engine Four in 2024. And again, would allow us to continue to maintain our program of keeping our frontline apparatus on roughly a 10-year cycle, and then in the second 10 years of life to move it to what we call a second due position, so it's not literally going out the door on every call to get our hopeful 20-plus-year lifespan out of it. And again, we ask for your support going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Next article is 31, and that's Brad again.
Yes, thank you. Article 31, Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $185,000 to be deposited in existing Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust funds with a selectman designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is eight cents per thousand dollars assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. As before, the Public Works Department also has developed a detailed spreadsheet showing life expectancy and cost of replacement of its fleet of trucks and equipment for the department. This warrant article will supply the funds for these purchases while also at the same time maintaining a steady impact on the tax rate, avoiding a spike when a purchase is required. I ask for your support for this article, and I'll turn this over to Dave for further details.
Thank you, Brad. Again, I like Tom. I would like to thank the taxpayers for supporting us over these many years. This is a big item every year, and it goes to help maintain $3 million of vehicles and equipment. Six-wheel trucks, 10-wheel dump trucks, loaders, grader, everything. We, there's a lot of stuff we have here, and we decided a long time ago, John Burt, we thank him for many years ago, for the first, setting this fund up many years ago. This helps us from having these spikes. We kind of can plan on it, and it's helped us this past year greatly. We have a detailed inventory of all the vehicles and the equipment, and we look at trying to make them last as long as possible. We have replacement costs, and we are, this past, this next year, we are looking at, again, an increase of 5,000 to 185,000, trying to keep up with a little bit of inflation we're seeing in the equipment. And here's a sample of our inventory. This year, the only thing we're looking at is replacing a 1998 Excel horizontal baler. It had a 20-year life expectancy. We pushed it a couple of years too far because it broke on us this past month, and as a result, we're now not being able to recycle plastic. That's unfortunate, but we have it out to bid, and as soon as this article hopefully is approved, we'll be able to award the contract and get that up and running. Again, very important project for us, and we hope you support it as you have done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next article is 32. Brian?
Article 32, Establish a Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to create a sidewalk capital reserve fund for the purpose of maintaining existing sidewalks. Said funds shall be under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds and to designate the selectmen as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact 2022 is three cents per thousand dollars assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. As we maintain our roads and we maintain our water and we maintain our electric, we should maintain our sidewalks also, and this gives us a vehicle to do that. The sidewalks are used by many, 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 many people, and keeping them in safe condition is appropriate. And away to you, Dave.
Thank you, Brian. Exactly. We have been picking at the sidewalks when we do a road project. We did Pine Street, so we did the sidewalk. And in the past, we had specific warrant articles for these on South Main Street. But you turn around, before you know it, five years goes by, and those sidewalks get done. And the sidewalks are not built properly, yet we have a big machine plowing them. We ever see our sidewalk plow, it's a very heavy piece of equipment, and that kind of makes the wear and tear. So, this is very important for us. We see this as ongoing, and we'd like to have the support because we will go after the worst sidewalks first. We'll be doing emergency repairs. This will also allow us to maybe put together plans on bigger projects that we've identified in terms of outside contracting. So, this will be a combination use for outside contractors and for us to do emergency repairs. And again, we appreciate the support on this project. Thank you.
Next article is 33, Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be placed in the existing Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust fund with the selectman designated as agent to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate for 2022 is one cent per thousand of assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, recommended, I mean, recommended by Board of Selectmen five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, eight to zero. This warrant article is asking voters to add $20,000 to the Abenaki Ski Capital Reserve. The Community Facilities Chapter of the Master Plan Gold One states, "Plan for efficient maintenance of existing facilities and subgold one states, establish capital reserve funds for facility upgrades or purchase costing over $100,000 or more." The Friends of Abenaki have donated to the town a groomer, snowmaking equipment, money for a lodge, and a new ski slope this year called Twister. This capital reserve fund was established to save for the replacement of the Friends of Abenaki's donated items and the town's ski hill equipment. Please vote to support this capital reserve fund, and I'll turn it over to Christine.
Thank you. This fund has proven to be very beneficial for us in the, when we had some groomer repairs. We currently are in the process of growing this fund to purchase a new groomer to us, possibly used. And with the expansion of the snowmaking we just had this past season, we did do a slight increase to the 20,000, and so it's slightly up from the previous year. So, we would hope that you would help support this because it is very beneficial for the running of Abenaki when we have unforeseen things happen. And we definitely examine what's going to be expended for that year to see if we can still utilize things. So, our ATV and our snowmobile are still working, so we haven't had to upgrade those yet, but we just have the money there just in case. So, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next article is 34. Dave?
Article 34, Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the existing Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund established for the purpose of making needed repairs, performing needed maintenance to the town's building facilities. This capital reserve fund is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, selectman designated as agents to expand capital reserve funding. Estimated tax rate 2022 is two cents per thousand. Recommended by the selectman, vote of five to zero, and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. This fund is similar to all the others we just went through, and it certainly helps us to, and the department heads, to maintain the buildings that we own. David?
Thank you. Again, this is another one that's really good planning. We have 23 town buildings, and there's always something that's going on, and, you know, every department head is responsible for their building. But it's nice not to have to worry about the unexpected things or some of the things that aren't expected, but we're planning for them, and we can do them, like we have done roof repairs. Next year, we're looking at the railroad station and doing some upgrades to the decking around that. So, we have a lot of different projects, but more importantly, if we have an emergency, we have something to go into. We found that these capital reserve funds are great for that purpose, and we appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Okay. Next article is 35. Brian?
Article 35, Pop Whalen Contingency Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of further architectural and engineering design work at the Pop Whalen Ice and Art Center. This appropriation is non-lapse in pursuant to RSA 32:7, Section 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2023, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Should warrant Article 11, Pop Whalen Renovation and Expansion Project Bond pass by a three-fifths majority, this article for $50,000 shall be null and void. Estimated tax rate impact 2022 is two cents per thousand dollar assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. And our town manager will explain this.
Thank you, Brian. Apparently, I had fat fingers when I typed this into the slide. The vote by the Board of Selectmen was not five to nine. The vote was, in fact, five to zero.
It looked like five to zero.
So, this is exactly what it reads. If the bond article for the Pop Whalen project at $6.9 million fails at town meeting, we need to have some funds to continue working with the architects and engineers to determine if there's any other solution. We really don't believe there is any other solution. However, if it's voted down, we've got to make some decisions whether or not we repair the existing building and maintain the existing arena and get it to be code-compliant as it stands. I can sit here today and promise you that if that article passes, Article 11, I have absolutely no intention of using this $50,000. We have to raise and appropriate if you approve it, but I have no intention of using it. It would be put back to the unassigned fund balance unless some form of an emergency came up at the Pop Whalen where the Board of Selectmen authorized that usage. Just a planning article to try and provide funds as a contingency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Article 36, Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited in the existing dockside parking lot capital reserve fund, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust funds with the selectman designated as agent to expend the funds in this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate for 2022 is four cents per $100,000 of assessed value, $1,000 assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, eight to zero. In 2016, the voters established the dockside parking capital reserve account and have been adding to it over the years. The Board of Selectmen, staff, and Town Dock Committee have had initial conversations about a new design for the dockside parking lot. By adding more funds to this capital reserve account, the tax impact of this project will be spread over a number of years and therefore lessen the tax impact on any given year. Please support this warrant article, and I'll turn it over to Dave Ford.
Thank you. Again, our problem is it's a parking lot in poor condition because it's on what we call urban fill. If you came here a couple hundred years ago, that probably was all open water, but as things evolved, it filled, and we see a lot of sinkholes, and it is an issue that's been a concern. We keep filling them, they keep sinking. So, the problem, we started talking about it, like I say, back in 2016. We had stakeholder meetings, we had preliminary plans. It kind of slowed down as we started working on the docks. We had to get the finger docks done first before we get to the parking lot. But right now, then, we've formed, the Selectmen formed an ad hoc committee, which is a combination of staff and businesspeople in the neighborhood trying to work on what the best solution is. Right now, we're looking at phasing the work so that the major construction will not be until after next year, but in 2022, we would like to get the electrical work in. A part of the parking lot upgrade also is going to mean putting in new streetlights and kind of get, right now, we have transformers that are too close to buildings, so we're working with the electric department on getting that fixed. And we're going to do the engineering and have the plans. Right now, we just get the contract out to civil works, so we'll be working on those plans. We have some issues with boundary lines. We're working on the boundary plan also with our neighbors. We have three neighbors there. We have some issues where the building is actually bigger than the lot. Go figure, but those issues that we figured we would get resolved. And then, we're also going to be evaluating stormwater management issues, what we can do for treatment. We don't have a lot of room there between the lake level and the parking lot. And then, we also want to have a stakeholder meeting so that this will result in us coming back, looking at the plans, and people have input, specifically stakeholders, people who use it. And so, that'll be occurring, and again, we will have a final pan before we have a final price. So, this is just keeping the project going. Next year, we expect to see plans and maybe some, the electrical, underground electrical going in. So, again, we appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Next article is 37. Luke?
Article 37, Waste Water Treatment Plant Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,000 to be deposited in the existing wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund, under the custody of the trustees of the trust funds with the selectmen as agents to expend for this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact for 2022 is eight cents per thousand assessed value. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. It is further recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. We have a great wastewater treatment plant. It's a facility that's old, but it's been very well maintained, and things do come up in the course of time, and having this capital reserve fund is very important and vital to that facility. With that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Luke. Again, we started this fund almost eight years ago when we identified a lot of problems, but we really couldn't tackle the whole plant. We said, let's keep it going. There was a report done back in 2007, said that we needed a brand-new plant for $14 million. Well, at that time, we're still doing the effluent disposal problem, so, and that didn't go so well, so we slowed down, and we recommended doing the capital reserve fund and taking the critical pieces of the facility to keep it running. I'm glad to say with our partners and our contract operators, what we're in currently, we've done a great job winning Plant of the Year in 2016, and we continue to get great results, wastewater treatment results. Our water is clean as could be, and it goes into the ground. However, the facility is old. It was built in the '70s, and the concrete is crumbling and needs work. What we did is we did submit for a grant application on the plant upgrades, but we did not, we're not successful this round. We did get projects we saw earlier. So, what we're looking at this year is continue doing some emergency work that, and then a basis of design report, and hopefully next year, there'll be additional grant money, and then we will then apply for a major plant upgrade. So, this money now is continuing with the emergency work, and all the work that we've done over the last eight years will fit with the major upgrade that will be hopefully in the next couple of years. Again, very important project, and we're proud of the building, and we hope you will support us, and we can continue treating and giving you clean water. Thank you.
Okay. Article 38, Water Resource Non-Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the existing non-capital reserve fund pursuant to RSA 35:1- C for the purpose of a watershed management plan including engineering design permitting, best management practices for stormwater drainage, and nutrition migration grant matching, and education, which is under the custody of the trustees of the trust fund with the selectmen as agents to expend from this non-capital reserve fund. The estimated tax rate for 2022 is two cents per thousand of assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. In the Future Land Use Chapter of the Master Plan Gold One addresses water quality. In the Natural Resource Chapter, Gold One states, "Wolfboro Water Resources are of primary importance as they provide drinking water, recreation, and scenic resources for residents and visitors, vital habitats for various species, as well as economic benefit. Protecting and maintaining the high quality is essential and should be a top priority for the community." This non-capital reserve account sets aside funds to address best management plans to stop stormwater runoff and to match DES 319 grads to mitigate stormwater runoff." And I would like to have your support on this warrant article. Jim, shall we read the other ones? Would you like to do that?
Yeah, I can read those. Okay. We've got three other warrant articles to go through that have no financial impact. Article 39, Increase Income, Increase in Income Limits for Elderly Tax Exemption. See if the town will vote to modify the elderly exemption from property taxes in the town of Wolfboro based upon assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows. For a person 65 years of age up to 75 years, $60,000. For a person 75 years of age up to 80 years, $90,000. For a person 80 years of age and older, $120,000. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. A person must otherwise qualify under RSA 72:39B Roman numeral II, including the income limit set forth in the statute. This was recommended to us to be placed on the warrant by our assessor. It was reviewed by legal counsel and approved. Article 40, Conservation Easement. To see if the town will vote to place a conservation easement on the town-owned portion of Whiteface Mountain Tax Map 37-7 and 37-8. See deed recorded at Book 3561, Page 196, with said easement to be held by the Lakes Region Conservation Trust. This partial, I believe, is tied in with the conservation easement that was done a couple of years ago with Whiteface, and Conservation Commission is just asking for another partial. And then we received a petition warrant article. Are you in favor of the Board of Selectmen appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment to allow filling these elected and volunteer positions that have been, that have become very difficult to fill as a result of qualified people not running as allowed in accordance with State RSA 673:3? This petition warrant article came in. The town clerk has verified the signatures on it, and we are just going through one last maneuver. But this will most likely be seen on the warrant. With that said, everything that we've just gone through, this is the opening slide. This takes all of the financial obligations that we are voting on at the deliberative... Talking about at the deliberative session and voting on in March that affect the 2022 tax rate. Sums it up for, again, a total tax increase of 35 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Just to put a little bit of that in perspective, last year, when the tax rate was set, we were able to have a two-cent increase in the tax rate. So we held that off very well. This year, we're a little bit higher. A lot of, most of that is due to the increase in the operating budget, which a lot of those are completely outside of our control. Again, New Hampshire retirement system, health insurance costs, the cost of contracted services such as tipping fees for waste, fuel, property liability insurance. The budget is on the town website. You should be able to go there and see it. If you have questions, you can call my office and ask or email me. And again, $100,000 home on the town portion of your tax bill will see an increase of $35,000. $300,000 home will see an increase of $105,000. And a $500,000 home will see an increase of $175,000... Or $175,000, excuse me. With that said, Lynda, I'll hand it back to you.
Yeah, I just would like to give two more figures. The state revolving loan fund, the town has gotten $2,383,898 in that funding. And in the ARPA grants, they got, we have gotten $1,967,392. So that is a significant addition to help us pay for all these projects that we have in front of you. I do want to remind you about some dates. Remember, the deliberative session is Tuesday, February 8th at 7:00 p.m. at the Kingswood Arts Center. In Clement weather date is Thursday, February 10th at 7:00 p.m., same location. Election is Tuesday, March 8, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Town Hall Great Hall where we are today. Thank you all for watching, and we look forward to seeing you at the deliberative session and seeing you come to vote on March 8.